Good morning. I call the Planning and Zoning Meeting of December 21st, 2022 to order. Would you please stand at this time and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, we'd have to do the roll call, please.
Jim Harris. Matthew Mitchell. Gabrielle Medley.
Here.
David Diaz.
Here.
Susanna Ballard.
Here.
Joan De Zero.
Here.
Dane Hatch. Paul Laird. Tiffany Wilson.
Here.
And Lonnie Stevenson.
At this time, we need Mr. Stevenson to please join us as the alternate. Mr. Stevens, if you could make sure you sign in, please. You get it. You get ready. Sign in. Okay, great. At this time, we'd like to get a staff report.
Yes, Mr. Vice Chair and Commissioners, thank you very much. You may have noticed a couple new, a new name on the agenda for the roll call. It's because City Council made some appointments at the previous meeting. Tiffany Wilson, who was current, who was an alternate member, has been appointed as a regular member now. And in her place as an alternate member is now Mr. Lonnie Stevenson. So those two people are, Mr. Stevenson's new to the board and Tiffany's taken on the role of a full-time Planning Commission member. So congratulations to both of them. Thank you for your service to the Board of, to the Planning Commission and to the city. The last thing is the City Council also approved the rezones that you recommended for the golf course properties. From the golf course to R1 properties, that those six or seven properties. There was another one for the R3 to the golf course, but that that applicant withdrew that request for whatever reason. So the Planning, the City Council did go forward with your recommendations. That concludes staff's announcements. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'd also like to give a congratulations to Ms. Wilson and Mr. Stevenson. Thank you. There are no, the minutes of the previous meeting are not ready at this time, so we will move on to the next item. This is a public hearing. The structure of the meeting will allow the staff to present an item. The commission may ask staff questions and then the applicant will have an opportunity to present commissioners. May have questions of the applicant and then I will open discussion to the audience. We ask that if you would like to discuss or address the commission, please do so, but there is a limit of one trip to the podium per topic and three minutes to speak. Please spell your last name for the record. I will then close the discussion and bring the item back to staff and ask for their recommendations. The commission will then hear a motion, discuss, and make a recommendation to the City Council for their final consideration. All right, the first item is ID number 22-3565. It's a one-year review of major conditional use permit number 21-0300011 for 4081 Bison Boulevard, tract 2295, block 3, lot 9, to allow boarding and daycare of dogs in the residential agricultural RA district. Mr. Morris, your presentation.
Mr. Vice Chair Commissioners, thank you very much. The property is just under two acres and it's located at the northeast area of town and then on the north side of Bison Boulevard, between Paseo del Oro Drive and Colt Drive. There's a wash at the rear of the property. And the properties in the general area are over one acre in size and are developed with single-family residential homes. The zoning map shows the surrounding properties are all also zoned RA residential agriculture. Here's an aerial photograph from the property taken in 2020. The property has a residence with a pool and a dog area in the rear, separated from the house by fences and walls and a gate. The dog area measures about half an acre in size. It's enclosed with a chain link fence and includes about a 2,400 square foot building, a small dog play area and a large dog play area and a bone-shaped dog pool play, pool, play pool. On October, December 15th of last year, the Planning Commission approved a conditional use permit allowing boarding and daycare of dogs at the subject property. The approval included a number of conditions, including condition number 13 for an annual review to gauge the impact of the use on the neighborhood and determine if any of the conditions need modification. The applicant has met all the requirements of the conditional use permit and staff has received no code enforcement complaints of any type against the property since it has been approved to operate as a dog daycare and boarding facility. Given these factors, staff suggests removing the annual conditional review of the conditional use permit. That concludes staff's presentation. Open any questions you may have. The applicant is also in the audience. Thank you.
All right, this time. Any questions for the staff from the, from the commission? Is the applicant present?
I'm the owner of Pet Oasis.
Okay, please, please state your first and last name for the record.
My name is Sheila Murphy. And we've been running this business since 2011. The boarding portion, I've been a mobile groomer since 2010. We have had a business license and health permit from the county. Since that time, the county lists us as a kennel. So we've been following all of the 13 criterions for the whole year.
Does the staff have any, does the commission have any questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you. Thanks. This is a public hearing. The audience, anyone wants to address the issue at hand? All right, I'll, I'll close the public hearing, bring back the, to staff for recommendation.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Commissioners. Based on the findings, Development Review Committee recommends that major conditional use permit number 21-00300011 for 4081 Bison Boulevard, tract 2295, block 3, lot 9, to allow boarding and daycare of dogs in the residential agricultural district be allowed to continue as conditioned in Planning Condition, Planning Commission Resolution number 21-04, except condition number 13 shall be removed and there shall be no additional annual re-evaluation required. Thank you.
Commission, have any questions for staff? Okay, now we're looking for a motion and discussion. Motion and second.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion that we approve suggested action number ID 22-3565.
Ms. Ballard, is your microphone on?
Sorry. I make a recommendation that we approve the suggested action ID 22-3565, a one-year review of major conditional use permit, 21-00300011 for 4081 Bison Boulevard, tract 2295, block 3, lot 9, to allow boarding and daycare of dogs in the residential agricultural district, less item number 13, which was a previous requirement.
Okay, we have a motion from Ms. Ballard. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Ms. DeRozo. Any more, any more discussion? I will call for the vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Congratulations. All right, the next item is ID number 22-3573, a request for a planned development rezone for 2 for 555 Burkamo Lane, tract 134, block 3, lot 19, from multiple family RM district to multiple family planned development RM-PD. District reducing the minimum required dwelling unit density from 10 units per acre to four units per acre to allow for one single-family home. Mr. Morris, your presentation.
Mr. Vice Chair Commissioners, thank you very much. Here's the subject property. It measures about a third of an acre. It's currently vacant. It's located on the north side of Burkamo Lane, just west of Jones Drive and a little bit east of Lake Havasu Avenue. The lots to the south across Burkamo Lane are zoned RE residential estates and developed with single-family homes and one vacant lot. There's a large, narrow parcel to the north that's also zoned RE and is vacant. The lots to the east and west are zoned multiple family, that's RM, and are a mix of vacant lots, single-family and multiple-family developments. Here's the general plan map. The future land use map for the general plan designates the property as low-density residential. This designation allows a range of four to six dwelling units per acre and the principal use for this general plan land use category is single-family residential housing. The subject property and the surrounding neighborhood are also designated low-density residential with the vast majority of the lots in this neighborhood developed as single-family homes. At the proposed four units per acre, the development is in conformance with the general plan land use map as well as the goals and policies of the general plan. So why are we here today? Well, because the previous development code, which, the development code is updated in 2016. The previous development code established a minimum and maximum residential density standards, but also included a note that lots of existing, record existing at the time of adoption of this development code within the R3 and R4, and the R4 is now called RM, zoning districts need not comply with the density limitations of this table. The actual number of units allowed on these lots shall be determined through compliance with other requirements of this table, such as height limitations, landscaping and parking, lot coverage and setbacks. So in the previous development code, even though there's a minimum maximum density, they weren't really, they weren't enforced because of this note. That note didn't carry over into the current development code. So the 2016 development code did not carry over that note. Therefore, the new development needs to comply with the minimum standards per the table. And here's the, the current table for the RM. It's a minimum of 10 units per acre and a maximum of 20 units per acre. So the subject property is zoned RM, so therefore it requires a minimum of 10 units per acre. At .34 acres, it would require 3.1 units. Therefore, the applicant is asking to reduce the minimum density from 10 units to four units per acre because at four units per acre, it would be allowed a minimum density of 1.24 units, which would be one unit. So they're asking to reduce it to four units per acre so they can build a single-family home on that instead of three units on it, instead of three homes on it. The development plan shows a single-family home with attached garages and the proposal meets all the RM requirements, development standards, except for this minimum density. So that's the reason for the request. That concludes staff's presentation. Happy to answer any questions. I'm not sure if the applicant's in the crowd or not. Oh, the applicant is here. Thank you.
Is the applicant here?
Yes.
Likes to make a comments or presentation?
No, he's said everything. Thank you.
This is a open hearing for the public. Anyone want to address the commission on this item? Okay, that, we'll close that. We'll bring back the item to staff for recommendation.
Based on the findings, Development Review Committee recommends Planning Commission forward a recommendation of approval to the City Council for land use action 22-3573 for a planned development rezone for 555 Burkamo Lane, tract 134, block 3, lot 19, for multiple family RM district to multiple family planned development, that's RM-PD district, reducing the minimum required dwelling unit density from 10 units per acre to four units per acre to allow a single-family home. And as a reminder, this item will go to the City Council's January 24th meeting with the commission's recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morris. Any questions for, for the, for staff on this item again, sorry. All right, we are here for a motion or further discussion.
I'd like to make a motion.
Motion by Ms. Ballard.
I'd like to approve suggested action ID 22-3573, a request for a planned development rezone for 555 Burkamo Lane, tract 134, block 3, lot 19, for multiple family RM district to multiple family planned development, R-M/PD district, reducing the minimum required dwelling unit density from 10 acres per acre to four units per acre to allow one single-family home.
You second?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. DeRozo. Any more comments, discussion by Commissioners? Wait, we'll call for the vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Congratulations. Good luck. Next item is ID number 22-3575, a request for 1417, 1421, 1420, I'm sorry, 4017, 4021, 4025 and 4029, Window Rock Road East, APNS 110-05-025, 023, 027 and 003, to amend and reconfigure the existing single-family residential R1 residential estates, RE and residential agricultural RA zoning district boundaries. Mr. Morris, your presentation.
Mr. Vice Chair Commissioners, thank you very much. The properties are four undeveloped parcels totaling about 80 acres. They're located at the eastern edge of the city limits on the north side of Window Rock Road. They are bordered on the west by 58 acres of undeveloped land within Lake Havasu City. The other abutting properties are within Mojave County's jurisdiction and include Arizona State Trust land to the north, privately held lots to the east and the Horizon 6 residential subdivision to the south. The subject property was annexed into the city in June of 2016 and assigned the city's RA zoning designation at that point, which was the most similar to the county zoning. In January of 2018, portions of the property were rezoned to R1 and RE to accommodate a proposed 84 lot, single-family residential subdivision. The properties in Mojave County's jurisdiction are zoned their designation of agricultural residential. The abutting properties to the west in the city limits is zoned, um, single-family residential. The subject properties, lots are zoned right now, a mix of single-family R1, residential estates RE and residential agricultural RA zoning districts. The general plan future land use map designates the property as combination of mountain protection area and low-density residential. The mountain protection designation's primary use is open space and its secondary use is rural residential development, similar to the city's RA residential zoning district. The low-density residential designation of the general plan, its primary use is for single-family housing, which is characteristic of most of the city's R1 neighborhoods. Here's the proposed zoning. The applicant's letter of intent explains that since the previous zoning approval, the federal regulations for waters of the United States have changed, which resulted in allowing more of the property to be developed. Based on the Army Corps of Engineers determination, the property owner has modified the previous lot layout and zoning areas. The requested zoning amendment will establish a zoning to allow approximately 145 lots, including about 105 lots on about 40 acres of property zoned R1, which is the green area, and 40 larger residential lots on about 20 acres zoned RE, which is the red area. The balance of the property, about 20 acres, will remain RA and be undeveloped. All lots are proposed to meet the R1 and the RE development standards, or there are no exceptions requested. Here's another view that shows the zoning designation areas and also shows Window Rock Road on the side here on to the left. The sewer and water surfaces for the property are available from Lake Havasu City. Although Window Rock Road right away in this area is under Mojave County's jurisdiction. Therefore, any street improvements and utilities, including curb, gutter, sidewalk, water, sewer lines, will need to be addressed in partnership between the city, the county and the developer as part of the new subdivision process. The first step is to getting the zoning in place, which is the entitlements, and then the further steps would be the preliminary plat and the final plat. And the preliminary plat will come to this commission. That concludes staff's, staff's presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions. The applicant is also here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morris. Does the commission have any questions for staff? Seeing none, is the applicant present? Please step forward, state your name for the, first and last name for the record.
Morning. My name is Terry Brearton, Lomis Land Company. So yeah, I pretty much, you know, told everything. Because of the wash situation, we were able to, we had a lot of restrictions in the, before, in the original design, the wash ran right between the middle of the property. So now that the, the definitions of the wash had changed, we got that rezoned, so that's why we, we're, we're here today to, we're still, like I said, we're doing everything according to the city standards. We're asking for nothing. We're well below the, the, the requirements for the, the allowed lotage and so, any questions?
Any Commissioners have questions for the applicant? Seeing none, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Anyone in the public would like to address this issue? Please step forward and state your name for the record.
Sue Lynn Ortiz. I live at 4036 Gold Springs Road. I moved out to Horizon 6 for the beauty and the peace and the acreage. All of our homes are all an acre property and most of them now are almost million-dollar homes all around that area. I'm really concerned about this development going up. I walk on Window Rock every single morning. I love that area. It's beautiful. I'm very concerned about the traffic. Right now, I might pass two or three trucks, maybe one or two cars. There's no traffic on that road, hardly at all. With this new development, two people per home, we're talking over 300 cars a day. When it's finished, people going to school, people shopping, it's going to take away from our area that we moved to, to enjoy. So I am concerned about that. And I want to follow it to see how far it comes and what they're going to do about the road situation. Right now, it's only a two-lane road. No sidewalks, just two lanes. That's my concern. The traffic control and taking away from our peace and quiet. Thank you.
Thank you. A question for staff. When we have developments like this that, that come up, is there, do we, do we do traffic studies also?
Well, thank you for the question. Traffic studies typically are something required with the preliminary plat especially because that's, the preliminary plat is, is the initial designs for the property, for the subdivision. So the traffic is a very important aspect of that. There was a preliminary traffic study or report submitted with the request. Upon, as I mentioned before, Window Rock Road is part of, is under the jurisdiction of the county. So the city and the county and developer have to work together to get the, the standards, to meet the county's standards. So at this point, the county is asking for, the preliminary plat's been submitted. It's in review. It's not ready for your review yet for the Planning Commission, but part, part of the stipulations, the conditions for that preliminary plat are revised and updated traffic study. So the traffic study is in the works. There was one submitted with this, but it's, it's deemed inadequate by the county. So there's going to be a new traffic study done, bringing into account roadways and how, have daily trips and how it's going to impact the area.
Okay. All right, thank you. Public hearing is still open. Any more comments from the public? Just one second, yeah. Please step forward and name for the record, please.
My name's Karen Johnson. I live on 4018 Window Rock. The traffic, now when Sue Lynn walks, I'm sure that it's not, early in the morning, the big trucks go through. The workers that are working on houses up above me run that road and they do not go 25 miles an hour. Now, I understand with the big trucks, the rock trucks, gravel trucks, whatever, they have to get a, a go if they're full to get up that hill. But they're still, I don't even ride my horse down that road anymore because it's so bad. And like, and, and then I have a big horse trailer that I have to come out of my driveway. All right, and I have to come in. I have to back in. So my concern is, is when you guys do the road and you have curbs, how do people with bigger trailers get in and out? It's, there's no room. Now, that road would be fine with all those curbs if you're driving a smart car or maybe a, a, a regular-sized car, but pulling a gooseneck trailer, it's not going to happen. I'm going to take my tires out, coming in and out of there. And if you go by my house and see where my trailer's parked next to my garage, I do know how to drive it. So that's my concern, is the road, the traffic. You might as well raise the speed limit because ain't nobody going 25 miles an hour. I'm here to tell you. I'm up early in the morning, I'm up late at night and the traffic is bad. So.
Okay, thank, thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Applicant, do you like to address, see, one more thing you wanted to say?
Yeah, I just want to state that we will be widening the road. We are giving a minimum right now of 10, maybe 15 feet more to make the road wider, the whole front of our property. So the, the road will be widened and we will be, it will be like a half-street. It will be a curb and sidewalk on our side, but the bottom line is the road is going to be wider. So, and then when the other property is developed, they too will have to have their road, their right-of-way increased. So just let you know, we're trying to mitigate that issue and make the road wider.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comments? Seeing none, we'll, sorry. Please step forward and state your name for the record, please.
Hi, good morning. I'm Nick Strong. I'm on Window Rock and we talked to a couple of community neighbors, you know, not a lot of people have time. We just talked to 42 dwellings from the start of McCullough up to the county and we already got over 70 signatures. People don't want to see a condo go up there. So there's a big concern with people lower in the area as well and I don't think they're getting addressed. So just thought, you know, we're kind of holding on developing our property. We bought it in the spring. We don't know what we're going to do. If they build a condo, we're not going to develop. We're just going to put some shops out there. It's going to take away from the property. So I think there's a lot of people with that problem. Yeah, that's all.
Yeah. Thank you.
I do have a copy of this, additions?
Leave it with.
We've got more as well.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back for staff's recommendations.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Based on the findings, Development Review Committee recommends the Planning Commission forward a recommendation of approval to the City Council for land use action 22-3575 for 4017, 4021 and 4025 and 4029, Window Rock Road East, APNs 110-05-025, 023, 027 and 003, to amend and reconfigure the existing single-family residential, R1, residential estates, RE, and residential agricultural, RA, zoning district boundaries as shown on the attached proposed zoning map. And as a reminder, this item will go to the City Council's January 24th meeting with the commission's recommendation. Thank you.
Any questions?
I have a question. Um, this is actually a request just for a rezone. Is that not correct?
That is correct.
And so any future development would have to come back with a plan, including plans for streets and et cetera?
Yes, the preliminary plat will have to come after it's reviewed and deemed ready to come to the Planning Commission by staff. That would include review by the county because of the county jurisdiction and the right-of-way for Window Rock. And of course, our city staff, once it's all deemed ready to come forward to the Planning Commission, it will come to this board and the commission then will, will look at it and make a recommendation. And then the final plat would then be drafted and put together by the developer and that would go to the City Council ultimately for their approval.
And how does, how does the city?
And how does, how does the city address with the county aspects to whose responsibility the road is?
And that's something we're going to work out with the county. Like I said, right now, Window Rock is 50-foot of right-of-way, it's the county's right-of-way. And so widening the road may have some of that property be partly, partly in the city, partly in the county, and then the roadway from McCullough all the way up to the project will have to be looked at through that traffic study. So it'll be something that we'll have to work through, again with the city, the county, and the developer for the roadway improvements based on the traffic impact study. Thank you.
And so the applicant's comments about widening the road in front of their property, if that was approved, would result in a wider property in front of their property, but it would go back to the normal narrower width along the rest of the Window Rock?
My, I anticipate that the applicant will have to provide additional right-of-way width for, along their frontage of their project. And we'll see what the county and the city work together on that to see how that's going to, what that's going to look like. But yes, we anticipate additional right-of-way width along Window Rock Road along the balance of this property.
And thank you.
So, Mr. Morris, so these meetings with the county and the city will happen after the 24th, when it goes to the city council or prior to?
They're going to happen in conjunction with the preliminary plat preparation and submittal. So the zoning in this case sets the regulations that are in place, establishes the property as zoned certain ways, gets your entitlements to the property. And so based on those zoning districts, that determines the lot sizes and that sort of thing, determines how many lots they can have on there, and then that all drives the preliminary plat design, and the preliminary plat will be reviewed for things like traffic. And so we'll take into account how this development will affect the traffic in the area. And in fact, that request for the traffic impact is going to take into account the vacant lot property to the east, to the, to the west, about 58 acres that is a, is zoned for a future residential development. So this traffic impact, this analysis will have to deal with both this project and the one to the west that's, will happen sometime in the future, and deal with Window Rock Road from McCullough all the way to this property.
So the application for the entire property has to include the RE section because of the size of the ultimate divided property?
What happened is the, because of the opportunity that was afforded them for the Corps of Engineers changing the flood areas, if you will, they rearranged the zoning districts. Previously, the zoning districts didn't look quite like this, they were a little different. The RE was closer to Window Rock, and the R1 was farther away. In this case, they kind of flipped them, and so the R1's closer to Window Rock and the RE are farther away. They just reconfigured the zoning districts, made them a little bit larger. So that's why it has to come for the, for the Planning Commission and the city council, because they're reconfiguring, they're changing the boundaries of those zoning districts.
Thank you.
Any other questions by commissioners? Okay, at this time, we're looking for a motion and a second. Anybody?
I can make a motion.
Ms. Durzo?
I make a motion on ID 22-3575, a request for 4017, 4021, 4025, and 4029, Window Rock Road East, APNs 110-05-025, 023, 027, and 003, to amend and reconfigure the existing single-family residential, R1 residential estates, RE, and residential agriculture, RA zoning district boundaries. And my motion is to approve that rezoning.
I second.
All right, we have a motion from Ms. Durzo and a second by Ms. Ballard. Any further discussion? Let's call for the vote. Good luck to you. This is a public hearing also, so we're going to, any questions from the, or comments from the public? We cannot respond, but if anyone wants to make any comments to the commission? Seeing none, we'll close that, and we'll ask staff for future meeting updates.
Mr. Vice Chair Commissioners, thank you very much. There's a, the January 4 meeting has been canceled. We don't have any items, so happy new year, no January 4 meeting. The next regularly scheduled meeting will be January 18. At this point, we don't have any items, but if we do, we'll certainly send it out, the notification, let you know. Thank you.
Thank you, and we wish Merry Christmas. I'm sure to all the staff for your hard work. And at that, we will adjourn the meeting. Thank you very much.